Now I'll call this meeting to order. Thank God we're on the beat here on this warm night. We will call on Commissioner Lattrell for our indication.
Quite again. By the heavenly fathers, we gather here tonight. We just give you great thanks for so many things, particularly the privilege of living in this county. Lord, I just pray that you would be with us this evening as we discuss the county's business. I pray that you would give us great wisdom and insight as to everything that we discuss. Also, we thank you, Lord, not only for our county, but for our state, for our nation, especially those that are serving in our armed forces, particularly those that are in harm's way. We also thank you especially for our public safety personnel in this county that keeps us safe. And we pray that you watch over them as well as things in Christ's name.
Now I'd like to call on Martha Chuney to lead the place of allegiance. Please. You all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Changing our order just a little bit tonight because we have an item that we have to take care of, and I'll call Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The item before you is the administration of the oath of office to a, for you to fill a vacancy on the commission. Under the local act, there is a, you have the authority to fill vacancies in the last six months of a particular term. A term of vacancy for the seat from District One was created on October 20th, and the term will expire on December 31 of this year. And there is a resolution before you to consider the appointment of Ms. Martha Chuney to fill out the vacancy as the District Representative One, for District One, and that, of course, she was successful in her election effort, and she won on January 1 of this year. She will be sworn in for a full four-year term, but this will just finish up that term. And you certainly have that authority under the law to do that should you adopt this resolution, the resolution is before you. And then if you adopt it, there is a commission that has been issued by the governor, as well as an oath, and there are those that are, our probate judges waiting in the wings to issue this oath to Mrs. Chuney should you adopt this resolution.
Thank you, sir. I will entertain the motion regarding the resolution.
Make the motion. I will be, go ahead and fill the vacancy with Martha Chuney.
I'm out, second.
Motion in a second.
I just have one item to discuss. The very end says adopted this 12th day of November. I think it should be adopted the 18th.
Yes, sir. There's, in order to get this accomplished tonight, instead of having to wait two more weeks, the, I dealt with the Secretary of State's office, and they said the commission that was issued by the governor is also dated the 12th. And so your resolution needs to be, coincide with that same date. So I realize the date was there, and it says the 12th.
But...
Is that adopted effective as of?
Yeah, I guess we can put it effective as of 12th.
If we're going to adopt it, it isn't until the 12th.
Okay. All right. Got you. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say if I'm raising your hand. Motion carries. All right. We do have the governor's piece of paper here, so orders up, so authorize this. At this point in town, I'd like to call our new probate judge, Alan Levi, up to the front, and Mrs. Chuney, when we come up here, we may issue the oath of office.
Thank you. Martha, we have two oaths we will administer this evening. The loyalty oath, and the official oath of county commissioner. We will do the loyalty oath. First, please, raise your hand. I'm Martha F.M. Chuney, a citizen of Georgia and being an employee of Harris County and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, hereby solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia. If you do so, swear, please say aye.
Aye.
And that the official oath of county commissioner. Please, Martha, again. I'm Martha F.M. Chuney, do swear or affirm that I will well and truly discharge the duties of commissioner for Harris County, and all of my efforts require my official actions to best with my knowledge and skill, and will so act as in my judgment will be most conducive to the welfare and best interests of the entire county. I do further solemnly swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state, or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, or any other state, or any foreign state which I am prohibited from holding by the laws of the state of Georgia, and that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution of the United States and laws of Georgia, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state. If you do so, swear or affirm, please say aye.
Aye.
Take your seat.
We will let her sign off.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. All right. Congratulations. All right. The next item of business is minutes from regular session of November the 4th. Do I have a motion?
Please for approval.
Second. Motion in a second. All in, any discussion?
Yes, I have one thing. Nancy, on the second page, seven paragraph C, the second paragraph on the bottom, it says, just refer to the whites in there, they are requests for special use. It says that, speaking of provisional license, it says I am opposed to special use for a classification. That needs to be clarified. I am not opposed, and, Lord, I stated that I was opposed in that instance. So if we could change that, please.
Chair? Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve of that change? Please say if I'm raising your hand. Motion carries. All right. Next is appearance of citizens. Mr. Moy.
Scott Moy, 1-4, 1-2-6, highway 16, high mountain valley. Just congratulations there in order.
Thank you.
For you. And hopefully me and you can talk here, one-on-one here in a few seconds.
All right. The Lance Brown Pro who does the testing was on his honeymoon, so he didn't get back to me till today. The request was made to do testing on your stream and on the river, the stream that flows behind the plant. Regional council does not have those supplies needed to do the testing in stock. They have requested that we authorize $350 to do the testing. I need that approved by the commission before I move forward on that, and then get the testing done, and then get results back.
All right. I'll make the motion to proceed with the testing and purchase of those supplies. Second. We've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All right. Be none. All in favor of the motion, say if I'm raising your hand. Motion carries.
May I ask, do you know about how long the results, it would take to get the results in after the testing?
I have to find out how long it's going to take to get supplied at first. It's only a couple of days after the testing.
Okay.
And that's all the news I have.
All right.
Has anybody been up to meet with him, like, that lady now?
No, and I fully intend to call the plant manager, schedule a meeting so that I can introduce Mrs. Chuney to the plant manager, so that she has open dialogue also. And I'm going to try and get that done, certainly before our next meeting. We're gone the rest of this week, but I will do so earlier the weekend.
Okay. Have you thought anymore about, I know we talked about it earlier, I wonder if we got into all this, of having a meeting with, like, me, you, and Greg?
Yeah.
I'm, I think we need to do that.
I do, too. And I think we'll get Martha out there, and then, you know, that can be something.
I mean, we've got a lot of fire in them, one way or another.
I agree.
It's time, I mean, it's just lingering on and on.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm learning more about it, more people I talk to, I'm learning more and more about it, and it's going to take a lot to get this done. You know, we just, I just don't want people to stop, because that's what they want. You know, they want it to stop.
Yeah.
And that's what most people do. When you're running that wall over and over, you just stop, and then you ain't got to worry about it no more. But there's a lot of issues up there, and a lot of people know about it. It's just, you know, get to that right person to get it done.
No, I fully intend to do that, and let us introduce Martha, and then we'll set up a meeting to...
Well, I'm not going to go up there myself, but that's kind of like, but I'd love for all of us to go that way. When they say something to you, if I don't agree with that, you know, it won't get out of hand, trust me. It's just, you know, you know what I'm saying.
I got you.
All right. Well, I appreciate it.
All right. We will set something up soon as we get to the first meeting.
Scott, I'll call you when we get to the second discussion.
Well, definitely do that, and I call on the board.
Well, did you talk to any neighbor?
Yep. That commission, no problem.
All right. Good. Anyone else, Nancy?
You go, Harrison.
Harrison.
Bobby Harrison, 159, I'm not proud. I am glad to see somebody sitting in that chair, and I'm glad it's mine. I did not vote, and I can hold up just that hillside in that time of year, and voted straight Republican ticket, like I always do. I lived in District Five, I voted straight Republican ticket in that district. I focused down in Howard, Cleveland. Back in the sixties, we had three commissioners, two Democrats, one Republican. Same here, both Holloway, one for government, Republican, too. Those two Democrats didn't know what to do. But one Republican said, why don't we all run as independents? That way nobody has to change parties, get accused of riding somebody's sculptor. But they did. They run as independents, and all three of them got it. I was resident in there in this county. In the next four years, were the hardest four years I've held in 1934. We had people that didn't know nothing about what they were supposed to do. The board had no idea how the bill rose. It was terrible. People corrected that and said, we can all start another good start. I told Martha it was hard. It was very hard, man. We're friends. She's done a lot for me, and I feel like I've done things for her. We did things for this county. One thing I know of, all the poor people in the world know about. She knows what I'm talking about. We didn't go around tooting our horns like that. We stayed precinct about them times, and they were going to be done away with it. We worked that deal out. It's a lot than that. Beth, still, congratulations, Martha. The other thing, Harris is going to get out about 20 degrees tonight, and I still don't have no gas. Now you're changing something, shed for the winter. We're going to make it. We've done our business there.
Well, I understand they did pay you a visit after I talked to them, but they still haven't hooked you up yet, but I...
You talked to him that next day. He called me the next day, made all kinds of excuses about a part he hadn't done. Said they, well, he said they sent the wrong valve to hook the two lines together. The people out there said they ordered the wrong valve. I don't know which one it was, but I know I don't have no gas tonight.
Okay. Will I call him again?
I don't know. I'll get up two or three times tonight, and I'll keep that fire going, pack it, and I'll make it. Good country boy.
Okay.
We know how to do it. And then one other thing that, last week, newspaper, about the, over three hours, the 354 was closed because chicken truck hung up on that half-in-curve, that traffic block over there, it's over three hours. Back then, I'd have, at the, she heard the vice president say that he had looked at that thing, it was too dangerous, he didn't want his trucks on that, he notified all his people, and notified the vendors. He said, we seen him, I'd call him. They run that road every day here, every day. It is a solution to that narrow bridge and that half-in-curve. A good engineering solution. I don't know why somebody's not asked about how it can be done, but it's like it's in the section out here, it's dangerous. Somebody's going to get hurt. It's not, not wind, it's not wind. If it's going to happen, it's wind that's going to happen. If it don't happen...
I have Greg, if you would, contact Bobby about the solution, see, see what, if there's anything that we need to look into.
354.
The 354.
Harry, I've been talking with DOT, I'm excited to get there.
Yeah, go ahead and talk about it.
Okay.
Heads down there.
All right. I've been talking with the people at DOT. Sam Wilder's aware of it, Citizen Mayhem aware of the situation. They've been out to that section of the highway, they've looked at it, they've researched their notes, and there's no restriction from the state standpoint on the trucks using the highway or going under the bridge. Apparently DOT takes the position that there takes legislative action from the state in order to prohibit a truck from, or any particular vehicles from using any state highway. So what they have done, they've already had an engineer design a sign, and the sign apparently, from what I'm gathering, is, is because the trucks are not going to the stop sign for visibility's better, they're trying to shortcut it a little bit, and they're getting caught on that hump, so they're, they're developing a sign to put there so that any trucks that use it, or try to do it right, and it's going to be a picture sign instead of words, but I don't know how many weeks it's going to take, if they take a while, you get in line and have it especially named just that one sign.
The road is now known as 354. It was created in 1948 as a county road. It was six straight in the valley, he had got those eight miles out. Seventy-four or something like that, seventy-five, Billy Cornet was born, he talked to the commissioner and to put that road on the state system. Forty-eight, seventy-six, seventy-five, somewhere around there, they changed, created Highway 354. Years before that, he created, Billy Cornet talked to the commissioner and created what's now Highway 315. That was county roads. Built this county road all the way through, and they put it on the system. There've been discussions, I went to a couple of them, what to do with it, something like that. You know, you could say, take that narrow bridge out and replace it. That's a historical thing. It would tear up the horn's nest if you started tearing that bridge out. There's no way to build, hardly to build around it and just leave it there, even have a separate road that don't get there. Our suggestion is that 354 come from 27 up to the mountain and there at the end of one night, stop. Get the rock bridge, rest of 354 coming in the valley, get it, give that back to the county, and county could sign that thing any way they wanted to, and keep their trucks out of there. But on the state highway, if it's a state highway, their trucks can run the road. They don't do it one time, that driver, he won't get hung up anymore. New drivers come in here, run GPS, they're driving through 354 to that track. And this, they can get a whole heap of drivers going to come in here, it's going to tend them, and they ain't even leaving it swatting, go, go more.
We, Bobby, that's, we'll look at that suggestion, that's changing a state route, and we'll have to see what we can do with that, but that's a good suggestion. We'll take a look at it. Martha's already done something, the signage, it's kind of in the interim, and Greg, you can just follow up on...
That would cut the rock bridge, we could save it, and put half-in-curve, that kind of highway control, and we could do it without the trucks in there.
Bobby, I'll get together with you and diagram that. All right? I'll get together with you and diagram that.
You get in touch, Greg, we'll get in touch with you and work that out.
Ah, I'll do that.
Thank you, Charlie. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you, Martha.
Wasn't some agreement made about not allowing trucks on there 10 years ago or so?
It can't legally be done because it is a state highway. It takes the state legislators to make that change. Sometimes local legislators will put signs up, but it's not really legal.
I don't care. I don't, maybe it's okay, it's...
All right. Is there any other, any old business?
Please, we brought it.
All right. New business, first item on new business is resolutions and agreements with Gipcor, with defined contribution 401A, defined compensation 457B, administrative services. This is for employee insurance, I don't see...
Mr. Chairman, Paul Bates is right over here.
Oh, there's Paul. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Paul, we'll look at that.
And we also, we as directed, we held two workshops for employees with, which Mr. Bates and their investor advisor attended. Employees had an opportunity to hear the presentation and ask questions, which Bates is here to ask, answer any questions he can have.
All right. And just, just for the rest of you that are here, up to this point, we have had our retirement options and things like that with three different companies. And as a result, we've not really been getting the attention that we need to help our employees make important life decisions regarding their retirement. Gipcor proposes to combine all three of those, and in doing so, in general, it will say, because with retirement plans, part of the money they put in there is to cover some of the fees. With the three being handled by one, those fees for the employee, for the employees as a, as a whole will be reduced by...
About $27,000.
$27,000 or so. Some employees will pay a little bit more initially, and those are basically the newer employees or those that have less than $5,000 invested into their retirement program. So as more is invested, the fees go down. The most that any employee will have as an increase on that is $27 for the entire year. About, there are a lot of employees who will have reduced fees. The biggest plus is that Paul, and there are, there are several other people with Gipcor, but Paul is our primary contact, will have individual contact with each employee to ask, to help them plan their retirement. A lot of our employees don't have that, and don't know where to go ask for it. And this, they can sit down with Paul, they're licensed professionals, and will be able to say, be asked questions as well, as well as determine what they want for their employee, for their retirement, you know, where, how much money they want, or this kind of thing, and come up with a plan as to how they can get there, assuming it's feasible. But at least they will get one-on-one so they can talk about their individual circumstances to Paul or one of his other folks with Gipcor. It has been very, very well accepted with other counties throughout the state that we've talked to. So that's, that's basically what we're talking about. So we will end up amending, we do have one plant with them, we will end up amending one of those plants and the other two, we knew. We have had a work session on this as commissioners, and then the department heads have also had a briefing, and then, as just Greg just mentioned, all employees had the opportunity to do that, and we had two different sessions, so the shift workers would be available to attend. So all that wanted to attend and wanted to have something else come up, had that opportunity. So with that introduction, I will then open this, Paul, if you, I know you weren't answering any questions, are there any questions that commissioners may have at this point in time? Martha, you may have something you have not had the opportunity to, towards week, to read all of it, but if there are any questions, please feel free.
Yes, I have a question. With the three presentations that were made to the department heads and the associates for employees, how was, how was this proposal accepted by them?
I would say very well. We had, I don't recall a single objection for many employees, most of them, when you mentioned the fee savings, there was a lot of head nodding to affirm.
Commissioner Lattrell, I can, I can tell you, I did the introductions for the two programs, and as some of them were leaving, come in, and I was coming up to introduce the second one, one of the employees just said, like, this is a no-brainer. So I don't think that was an implication on the commission.
So it's very stunning that it was strong, in the sense of saying this among all employees. Yes. Thanks, sir.
All right. When you're asked, you were saying the employees have the opportunity, are those meetings scheduled on a regular basis?
Yes. We do two types of meetings. One is I'll be here regularly for new employees to do, that's called new employee orientation. Probably that same day, I'll schedule at least a couple hours if we need to, for people to come by for individual appointments. Additionally, I'm available by phone or email during off hours, so people just quickly can approach us.
I worry about the program in one respect, and I've expressed it, that the target aid funds are, their expenses are considerably higher, and that... So all that wanted to attend and wanted to have something else come up, had that opportunity. So with that introduction, I will then open this, Paul, if you, I know you weren't answering any questions. Are there any questions that commissioners may have at this point in time? Mark, you may have some that you have not had opportunity towards week to read. All right, but if there are any questions, please feel free.
Yes, I have a question. With the three presentations that were made to the department heads and the OCSs for employees, how was, how was this proposal accepted by?
I would say very well. We had, I don't recall a single objection for many employees. Most of them, when you mentioned the fee savings, there was a lot of head nodding in the affirmative.
Commissioner Latimer, I can, I can tell you, I did the introductions for the two programs and had a as some of them were leaving, come in, and I was coming up to introduce the second one. One of the employees just said, like, this is a no-brainer. So I don't think that was an implication on the commission.
So it's very stunning that it was strong to the sense of saying this among all employees.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
All right. When you're asked, you were saying the employees have the opportunity, are those meetings scheduled on a regular basis?
Yes, we do two types of meetings. One is I'll be here regularly for new employees to do, that's called new employee orientation. Probably that same day, I'll schedule at least a couple hours if we need to, for people to come by for individual appointments. Additionally, I'm available by phone or email during off hours, so people just quickly can purchase.
I worry about the program in one respect, and I've expressed it, that the target date funds are, their expenses are considerably higher. And that that I just am worried that it's too easy for an employee to not understand that these expenses are enough higher that you will never reach the level, if you did the same thing using the S and P index in a in a bond fund, you would save at least a percent per year, which is compounding a great deal. And I just, I would like to, I actually recommend that they be removed in favor of doing it, a, you know, that the meetings being set up where if people who want to use targets do it in a manner that it will be less safer.
Well, we have, we have a slew of index funds available, and we also have, of course, the target funds.
I just think that in many cases that trying to ask, and I would like to see that you, or I'm asking you and your representatives, very strongly push that they use a, you know, bond, bond funds and stock funds rather than the target funds because the difference in cost.
We'll certainly bring that to light. They will be absolutely acutely aware of there's a difference.
I think I've figured out the answer.
Okay, okay. Any other questions, comments for commissioners? All right, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, there, if you'll notice from your agenda, there are two resolutions that you'll need to adopt. And then also adoption of four different administrative service agreements. You did all of them in motion, but it's, there are several items. Five items that have to approve to make the transition.
All right. Then I will entertain a motion. I will make the motion that we approve the plans, the Gipcor plans that they've been presented to us. But then, I believe we said what the effective date was, sometime shortly after the first of the year.
That's the target. That's, we're gonna do it from today.
What date, I'm sorry?
About February the fifteenth. It's a little flexible in there. Because we have to roll over or transfer the funds that are in the other plans to the Gipcor plan. And there is no cost to move that over.
That's correct.
All right, we got a motion. Do I have a second? We got a motion in the second. Any other further discussion? On the favor of the motion, signify raising hand. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. We look forward to seeing you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is, Greg, you or Joe?
I'll take care of it.
All right. This is a resolution for Trailers Grant for the Eldersley Park part.
What we are requesting is a hundred thousand dollar grant from the Trails Program. We're looking at funding a twenty percent match requirement. The estimated cost on the, a bridge to cross the larger lake is thirty-four thousand dollars, one or another. We'll probably have some associated costs with that. We're required to pick up twenty percent of that, which thirty-four thousand would. Reason that this bridge is important, if you've been out there and seen the topography, it's a fairly long hike to go around the twelve-and-a-half acre lake. But that's exacerbated by the fact that you have wetlands on the south end of the lake, so it would require a large swing around. By putting a bridge across, you can facilitate folks that have a little harder time walking, moms with strollers, younger, younger folks to make a shorter route around there. You also can then use the bridge as an option for fishing as opposed to just putting a fishing pier out there so it's multi-use. No guarantee that we're gonna get the grant. We're still, we're gonna put it together. I actually didn't get the construction estimate till this morning. If we don't get it this time, at least we'll have a lot of the work done, try and go for next time. But in order to do that, we need to have the resolution included in the package. So we're not gonna meet until after the due date, so we need to get that approved. Tonight, essentially, you're bidding us to pay for the additional thirty-four thousand.
What's the construction estimate?
Hundred and thirty-four thousand. I'm going for a hundred thousand dollar grant.
Okay, and I have one question, or maybe a statement. I would hope, we don't plan to do any work until we know whether or not the grant's approved correctly.
Correct. It's contingent. Yeah, I'm not going that direction.
Is this one of the Trails funds through the River Valley Regional Commission?
No, this is, this is the DNR.
What is the due date for the application?
Twenty-sixth.
And about how long do we expect it to take to arrive?
I haven't definitely, this is head of Georgia, I imagine sixteen to ninety days.
So a little forceps ring.
Of course. Yeah, but before we do anything else in the park, we need to do the burns. And probably the selective clearing, facilitate getting the, the, the the bridge in sections down. I think they propose, I think six sections, which would mean six anchoring, or five anchoring points, I think, along the, along the way.
So it's constructed, it's pre-constructed?
Yeah, and then they put it together.
Put together.
What will the length of the bridge be?
Two hundred and seventy feet approximately. Depending on where we, if we bridge, if we bridge more subtly to avoid some of the wetlands, we could potentially go shorter, but the wetlands in there make it real tricky. And I'd rather just avoid the wetlands for various reasons.
Be enough clearance for boats to get underneath there?
No, probably not.
It would cut off the sound.
It cuts off the sound.
Which is shallow anyway.
There's, the majority of the lake would still be available for kayaking and things like that.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Let the motion approve.
Second. Motion approved, and a second discussion. On the favor of the motion, raise your hand. Motion carries. All right. Next item is, we have two requests for tax refunds, both coming from tax construction. First one is requesting a refund for a hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-six cents for nineteen ninety-one truck. And the other one is for twenty-nine dollars and seven cents for a nineteen ninety-three International Four Thousand Series truck. Paid their taxes in Harris County, and then they went to Atlanta to renew their IRP tags. They totally had to pay the taxes in Atlanta, so again, to get those. So the Tax Commissioner has reviewed the request and has recommended the rest agreed with the refunds.
Can I ask a question of the Tax Commissioner? Oh, she's going in here. So they paid their taxes, their Harris County taxes in Atlanta?
No, they paid them here, and then they went to Atlanta and had them again. So they want the taxes back from Atlanta.
Now, they want, they want their taxes back from here.
From here.
Oh, here, because they had to pay them again in Atlanta.
Double taxation.
I'd rather have money here than.
I understand.
Yeah.
Well, I spoke with Vicki about it, and she said that there's been a confusion. They've been revamping some things up in Atlanta. And that's why this confusion is to where you go to pay. And of course, the state is going to send the county share back to the county.
Hopefully, eventually.
She said they would.
Okay. All right, entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve the refunds on both requests.
Certainly.
Motion in the second, discussion. On the favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, the next item is the financial statement that you received previously for September of two thousand and fourteen. This statement does have notes in it as to any kind of glaring discrepancies or where it looks like we're out of hand. We're not, but it explains those. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
On the second. Motion approved, and a second. Any discussion? On the favor.
I just wanna say, I abstained.
Okay. Noted that you abstained. All in favor, please signify raising hand. Motion carries. All right, and one other, just a point of information I'd like to bring up under new business. I just got today the latest report from River Valley Regional Commission on the T-Sfloss. And while all three of the regions that approved it are running a little bit behind what had been forecast, we are, we are the better of the three, and we're running about fourteen percent behind what was initially forecast. So far, Harris County has been awarded about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for our own discretionary use since the program started. And as far as money for projects that were part of the seventy-five percent fund for Harris County, we have now have eighteen and a half million dollars.
Chairman, I'm sure it was a hundred and seventy thousand, because we sure spent like two billion dollars. We'd be getting about.
Yeah, we're getting almost, you're right, we're getting, that was, I'm sorry, that was just for a quarter. Because we're getting about almost a hundred thousand dollars a month.
Correct.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, I misspoke. That was for just, actually, that was for just two months of July and August, I mean, August and September. It was a hundred and fifty-five thousand, so. I'm sorry, thank you for catching.
Terry, was there any reasons given to explain why we're running so far with our projection?
Uh, no, not really, Joey, other than, you know, just things across the state or the tax collections, even though they're approving, I think the DOT had a little bit rosier picture for the prognostication of the improvement. As, as it continues to improve, improve over the ten-year period, we'll probably be on the plus side as we get later. But they, and as far as any shortfall affecting any of the programs at this point in time, it's not at all because they do have money in hand and that money is invested. So none of the programs have been slowed down at all as a result of this shortfall. All right. Any other new business? Okay, then I'll get to the county manager's portion. Greg, first item was a request for vehicle use for the Catala.
Yes, sir. Originally, they had requested the Blazer that had been retired from the appraiser's office. But am reviewing the state of repair of that vehicle, they decided to request one that might work a little more frequently. And so they've just basically asked it, when we bring one of the cars out of the commission that's in good shape, that they can have for their use so that they can use it for training, attending training, things like that, so that individuals don't have to put wear and tear on their own vehicle when they're not getting reimbursed.
Okay. Do you want a consensus on that, or do you want to go?
The question is, though, is that we're going to loan them the car, if we have, the trucks that we own are at the different departments? Or are we going to transfer title? We're still gonna pay the insurance anyway.
It's cheaper if we retain title, is it not? Because then we just do it on a regular term.
Our insurance is cheaper.
Yeah. Okay. All right, and I'll entertain a motion as to whether, where we title it, whether we lend it one in the interim title.
I'd make the motion that we lend
Okay.
the vehicle to the Catala Fire Department.
Second. Okay. Motion, any discussion?
The liability is still to our whole protective.
All right, all in favor, please signify raising hand. Motion carries. Next item is personnel position reclassification to tax assessor's office.
Currently, we have an appraiser's position that is a combination GIS appraiser's position. Since Rusty's left, we just have not been able to find somebody that has any significant GIS qualifications. We found that pretty much appraisers are appraisers and GIS people are GIS people. What we would like to do is eventually establish a standalone GIS position. But in the meantime, just reclassify this appraiser's position just as an appraiser. And then take the money that's saved from the budget and set that aside either towards a GIS position or if we don't, if the commission doesn't see fit GIS position in sometime this year or in the next budget, to use that funds that were saved to go ahead and pay consultant to do the splits for the appraiser, so. But at this point in time, what we're just asking is for it to then reclassify that position to an appraiser's position with understanding where we're going potentially in the future.
For clarification purposes, we actually have several departments in the county that use GIS.
Exactly.
And we actually can make more use of that.
By having a fully qualified GIS person, absolutely. But those folks go, regional plan, the regional council right now is paying their folks between forty and fifty thousand Columbus for similar classification, similar pay grade. So if you want to get in somebody that's got a degree in that field. And we really would need somebody to agree and do the work alone rather than a technician because we don't have anybody to supervise them, therefore, they just be on their own. Because we can use them, planning department can use them, appraisers can use them, audit department, public works. We could even, we're going to be doing, presenting some research in the future as far as similar thing, income you can potentially make from providing GIS services as far as map, things like that, to appraisers, to real estate books, to other developers. So when that is fleshed out better, then we'll bring that before the commission, which I'll actually address at another point here a little bit further down as a topic of discussion.
All right, this will be a full-time position.
Yeah, what we're doing right now is reclassifying the.
I've done it going forward for the GIS.
GIS is just such a specialty, and it's so widely used these days, that.
We can keep someone busy full-time.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we could do things like, which we don't have, is lay out where all the water lines are in the county, like those out through GIS and any of the electrical lines and everything else, which will help a lot as far as this development or redoing things or even looking at flats and saying whether we might run into problems if we widen the road or take a curve out.
And some of the, one of the real beauties of it is, you know, at three o'clock in the morning, you get called out to find a water valve and you have, you know, you have a computer right there that shows you within free theta where the valve is. That saves a lot of time and trouble and gets problems solved a lot quicker, which is one of, one of the values.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I move that the position GIS appraiser be changed to just strictly an appraiser's position and go forward as suggested.
Motion, do I have a second? Second. Discussion. I'll pay the motions, if you have a raising hand. Motion carries. Next one is AWAS, effort.
We previously have approved the licensing of the AWAS, and we're going, we completed that process. License has been applied for. With the production backlog, they are suggesting that we go ahead and order the system now in order to have it arrive close to the same time that the license would be approved by the FAA. The cost is approximately eighty thousand dollars. That's under state contract, so it will not be bid. I have talked to GDOTs and have asked them to see if they can look in their pot of money and find us some. Can't guarantee it, but they were hopeful. But I don't want to base the purchase on that, obviously, if we go forward.
All right. entertain a motion.
I recommend that we be, that we go ahead and approve it.
Motion, we have a second. Second.
Mr. Chairman, before you go forward with taking your vote, I'd like to call your attention to two, to a couple, three things. Of course, you'd be accepting this quotation, and the quotation says that the vendor's general conditions of sale, general conditions of service and general license conditions were applied to, to the sale. There are, I've looked at all three of these, these documents, the general conditions of the sale. I have a couple of issues with that that we need to, we need to possibly see, talk to the vendor and see if we can negotiate out such as their liability is limited solely to the amount of the purchase price. You've got airplanes flying in and out of there and this thing goes bad or whatever this thing does and then they, everybody gets sued and then, you know, they, they say, well, look, you know, our liability's limited to eighty-three thousand dollars. I'd have an issue with that. Also, there's an indemnity clause in there that, item twelve B, I would try to, we take out, and then also, item fourteen deals with disputes, and this provides for binding arbitration. And the arbitrator is, of course, will come from the American Arbitration Association, which is not unusual, but the conditions of the sale provide that the vendor apply the laws of the state of Colorado. And so, I would suggest wholeheartedly that that paragraph be rewritten and provide for, for mediation that's not binding, eliminate the arbitration, and then the law of the state of Georgia apply and venue being Harris County Superior Court. The same thing on the general conditions of service, and so, you're getting two things, you're buying the sale and you're also getting some service under this agreement as well. I have a couple of issues with those and then, as well as the, the same type of problem, this one says that, that the laws of the state of Colorado apply and that there is binding arbitration as well. And so, I would change that one and recommend you not do that. I think I sent y'all a copy of a lawsuit that came up, something that came out of the ACCG, sent us some county attorneys that somebody got called to applying the laws of the state of Pennsylvania and got hammered in some sort of transaction, if you want to...
You would recommend we table it till we look that up?
Yeah, I would. And then the last one is the licensing conditions, and this is one I might want to say leave it living there. I would mind going to try to do this one, but it, this provides the arbitration, binding arbitration and the laws of Finland apply.
Finnish, Finnish central changes.
Right, and it has to be done in Helsinki. But it does, it does say that the arbitration has to be done in English. So, I will volunteer to go to Helsinki to handle any of those disputes that arise.
Funny how he didn't tell me about this before.
Mr. Chairman, if possible, I'd like to table this until our county attorney...
All right, it is tabled.
I'd like to get your opinion, John, also on the disclaimers of the software. To me, that seems well above.
Yes, yes, they're, they're usually written and to protect the seller. And so, you know, it's, the devil's always in the details and they're, sort of details later. I think it's probably a good product, it's just that, you know, it's written, written for their benefit, so.
All right, so leave this table until we've worked out the...
In the event that we can't work out these things, I share your concerns. Do we have another vendor?
We have to go and bid it state contract right now. We don't want to come up with, I think there's probably a limited number of producers in the country that's fairly specialized.
And they all have all the same language.
Yeah.
So, maybe Helsinki, Finland.
Yeah. I've seen a lot of them, I've never seen one that said Helsinki and made some reference to a general, to a United Nations treaty agreement, and that's beyond my pay grade to know about that.
Greg, have you talked to GDOT's aviation division yet, or any other potential sources of AWAS?
Well, she called to make, make sure that I was doing it state contract, so apparently there's one of them.
Okay.
But I will, I will follow up with her as well.
All right.
No, John's going to have some of the issues I wouldn't have brought today.
All right.
The cattlemen's building, we were going to try and do blow, spray and ice any foams, which was, is much more energy efficient. However, when we got to pricing it for the size of the building, we found the price tag was going to be twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. We decided that that probably was not the best investment in the funds for the building, so we requested price to the standard. When you, for you that were at the sturdy build grand opening and you looked up and saw the, the batting and the ceiling, that's the kind of insulation we're going to go ahead and opt for, but that has to be placed for metal is placed for it to work properly. So, therefore, we're going ahead and going to do you with a change order to get that insulation done at about the third look possible, the blown-in ice cream, which is eleven thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Why wasn't this included in the original bid?
Because we were planning on doing the foam insulation ourselves separately and we hadn't costed it out at the time that we got...
Why had we not costed it out before we even went out with the bid?
Because this whole thing started because of the former commissioner, not the...
I'm sorry. Why had we not costed it out before we...
One commissioner got the cart, was forced and we worked with a cartless horse, horseless cart, doesn't matter. It hasn't been a present for staff, either.
Do we foresee any more change orders?
I don't have a question at all, but I should think this, the rest of it, we're going to take on ourselves. This was one of the projects that we were going to do ourselves and decided not to.
All right, I understand that. And, and the other projects that we're going to take on ourselves, what are they?
Doing the installation of the drywall, the toilet fixtures. We, basically, we're going to basically spend it out, the interior walls, the plumbing's already been rough, which we have to, we are contracted out, it's your work.
And the electricity, is there any electricity? Who's doing that?
We've finished the electricity.
We can or we are?
We are, and can.
Chairman, I'll leave it, we approve the change. Motion in a second, any more discussion? This is coming from the, is this from the splosh, or is this...
Well, we have fifty thousand from the cattlemen's, but also then the balance comes from the splosh.
All right, any, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say if you're raising your hand. Anything else?
Yes, I do have one item that I touched base with you on earlier, and this would be a time where we could just discuss the GIS position. There is, Georgia EMC has a facilitator named Carrie that facilitates, we're not going to call it a retreat, we learned a new thing at ACCG, we're going to call them advances now, but she does swat, she's basically a facilitator, and discussing it with the chairman, this commission has not had a retreat or an advance, whatever you want to call it, for the fourteen years that the chairman's been on board, what would ever...
Nothing here.
Okay, for every long time, which, where you get together offsite, you do some strategic planning, set some goals for the next several years, this would be a good opportunity to review some of the things in the comp plan, make some strategic plans, basically, look at things and kind of get a strategic plan, you know, at sitting down a day together, because you never have that, the time to sit together, and you have a professional facilitator that can go over subjects with you, you know, get consensus, guide the discussion. And basically, the service is free, we just have, need a fireplace to have hosted, and we'd like to do that sometime in January or February, if the commission approves, then I can go to her and see what date she has available.
Okay, so zero cost to the county?
That's what I, well, for lunch.
I can buy all lunch.
Okay. Brown baguette, then the zero cost. We might be able to get a sponsor. But if the commission wants me to explore that idea, I can see about available dates.
All right. I, I think, you know, we, we have sort of a time each year when we do budgets and whatnot, that's about the only time we do any kind of forward, you know, a lot of forward planning other than when a project comes to our attention. I certainly think it would be, be beneficial to the county and to us, looking at things that we might work toward, to help us plan, plan some of the expenditures in the splosh money, for future splosh, if we do that, and also look at where we might need to be putting infrastructure upon something that we see developing or would like to see developing.
I think it's a little time that the department heads can come in and discussing with the commissioner and constitutional officers as well, if that's the commission's desire, we've never done it before, so we're starting with a clean slate.
There's one we did, that you probably remembers it back in, we went out to a gas place down here back in two thousand, two thousand and one, and most, and spent part of the morning kind of doing some general, advanced strategic planning, but beyond that, that's, never followed up with after that.
Under the open meetings law, we would be required to publish the date, time and place and open it up to the public.
Yes.
But they'd have to put their lunch.
I bring an extra sentence.
So, does this have to be done locally, or could it be at a lounge?
Yeah.
It's a little place.
Okay, have it there.
At Becky's house, if you could cook for all of us.
Then well.
But it's less of the, your retreat's name?
Chappell Falls.
Chappell Falls, I mean, it's awesome. All right, you can even have there. Set around the table.
I just, I just don't want to save the county any for any expense.
I know that, you know, through talking with peers at ACCG, a number of the counties do have long-term planning retreats and they speak highly of it. It depends on us as to whether we make something really positive.
Trying to provide arrows for your quiver.
All right. So, if we want to...
I think it's worth looking into.
I, I think it is too. Let's, I don't know if we need to, because we're not going to talk about spending any money at this point in time. Greg, go ahead and make, make contact and see if we can set something up, if all of you agree with that. Okay, if there's consensus, yeah, go ahead and talk to her and see what to... All right, anything else, Greg?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now we move to Mr. Taylor. John, you have agreement with Gordy Construction for the Satteris sewer for the Grove, turn your hand.
Yes, sir, in both of these items, these items, thirteen and fourteen, deal with the Grove and the construction sewer line. As I said in the earlier on, in the Public Improvement Authority, the UBIT, back in, I think it was two thousand and six, had worked with the Grove people to plan and deliver it and install sewer line to service this project, which is down around Mulberry exit on one eighty-five. And we had a downturn in the economy and several other things that developed, and now the project is, the developers are ready to move forward. With the, with the project, they have all the easements in place except one to run the sewer line from Muskogee to, to the project site. The sewer line will be, once it's installed, you will own it and it will, you will service all of the entity of the buildings and facilities that are built within this, this project area, which will, is multi-use. There'll be some, some big block stores, I think, there'll be some, some offices planned as well as some light industry, as well as some homes. And so, the, and these bonds that will be issued to pay for the project will be repaid with sewer tap fees that will be paid by the, the people that come in and build these particular projects and then, and within the, within the Mulberry Grove zone. Now, in conjunction with that, there is a contract before you, between you and, and Gordy Construction Company for the construction of the sewer line. It is in the, in the matter, in the amount of three million four hundred and twelve thousand. It's going to be paid with bond funds that will be, will be issued and by, and hopefully closed by, by mid-December. And what this will do is, this contract is a very well-written contract, but it has to be, the work has to be completed within two hundred and, two hundred and forty consecutive days after a notice to proceed. And of course, we will not issue the notice to proceed until the bonds are closed and until such time as the, all the easements in place are in place and are transferred to, to the county. And this contract provides for some liquidated damages for the contractor, contractors failure to, to complete the project timely, and the, there are some card and sloop, I think, designed this project, and their, your engineers that do a lot of your water work. And the agreement is, of course, subject to the, to general conditions and supplementary conditions, and those are AIA-type, type documents. This contract provides also for some non-binding mediation in the event of dispute, and then the, in the event that there has to be some litigation, the litigation is governed by the laws of the state of Georgia. I would add one clause to that, to section ten point oh five, ten point five of the contract, say the venue, jurisdiction and venue is to be in the Superior Court of Harris County, Georgia, so that any action that has to be filed is filed in Harris County as opposed to some other places in state of, state of Georgia. There is no waiver of sovereign immunity in, in the contract, but the, and I feel like the contract is, like I said, well-written and accomplishes that which you're, you're trying to do is get this sewer line constructed and operational in a pretty fairly short period of time. But the, the notice to proceed will be based and have to be contingent upon the assignment of these easements to the, to the county, and I would like to say there's one left. But this, you already have a agreement in place with Muskogee County where Plum's Water Works to take the sewage and there's a fee that they will charge, and of course, you will charge, have to set a, a rate for tapping on the sewer as well as a monthly sewer rate, and then that will be taken to pay the, paid Muskogee County for taking and processing the sewage through their sewage treatment plants. The, but that agreement is, is in place and ready to go. There are two other things that you will need to do within the next, next thirty days. One is to adopt a sewer ordinance that is... One is to adopt a sewer ordinance that is substantially the same as, uh, as that of Muskogee County, or Columbus, rather, the Columbus Water Works. I've gotten that document, uh, I, their document, I have taken it and tailored it to the, uh, for this particular, for Harris County, and it's not going to be limited solely to this particular project. If there are any other sewer, uh, connections with, uh, with, that you develop with Muskogee or Columbus Water Works, such as over Woodland Hills, and, and there's some talk, there's been some talk about that, the sewer, uh, uh, ordinance would also apply, uh, to, uh, to that, uh, that, uh, that, that project. Uh, and the, uh, the other thing is that, uh, you need, will need to create a special tax district. I have a draft on the, uh, of that special tax district. The agreement that you have with, with the Grove, uh, is that, uh, in the event that, uh, something happens and, and they don't, uh, they don't sell the, uh, don't sell the, the project out and you, then don't pay, uh, there's not enough money to pay for the, uh, for the sewer taps to pay for the bonds, then you are create, will create a special tax district, which will be only for this piece of property, and you can tax, uh, levy a tax sufficient in that, uh, on that, on that property to make up the difference between the, the, uh, sewer tap fees and what you owe on the bonds, and that will last throughout the term that, that the bonds, uh, that the bonds last. So those will be coming to you, uh, I'll be giving those to you in the next, uh, you know, owner before the next meeting, if you can take a look at those and get those ready to go, because all that will need to, you know, follow into place about the same time as we start the, uh, the, if the, we get the, the, uh, the fact that those proceed with the, uh, contract we've got.
Just to reiterate again, for any citizens here who have not been in the previous meeting there, there really is no cost to the county in this, the developer is, uh, by our agreements with them, fair of the court, run of the...
Yeah, sewer lines been designed by, by Carden Sloot and, uh, as part of the bond funds, which they will be, uh, will be having to, to, to pay, which can be reimbursed in the amount of the, of the, uh, development cost by Carden Sloot, which is some, you know, fairly healthy sum of money, so.
Now, what if the, what if the owner of the property can't pay the special tax?
Then you can foreclose on the, uh, property and sell it just like, uh, like you would on a, on a tax...
Yeah, and primarily, Joey, if, if it was slow development, then the people that own the property are gonna be the developer, so they're really going against the developer, and in the event, I don't see those, those two entities going belly up, but in the event they did, then the land comes to the county, and we become the developer.
Yeah, you know, the way...
Very well secured.
Yeah, yes, yeah, the way, the way, the way it, it, it works is that the, the developers are obligated to pay those things under the, under your agreements with them. The developers also, who are, you know, the entities out of Bradley and, and Woodruff, and Columbus, or Swift and Woodruff, rather, and, and, no, excuse me, Bradley and, and, uh, those developers, uh, and their, their entities are obligated under the contract. They are also buying the bonds, and so they're paying, paying for the, for the bonds, so they have got a vested interest in making sure the bonds get paid, because, you know, it's out of their pocket that this money's coming anyway.
And...
Yes.
And the completion time, you may have, I may have just not heard, it was eight months, I just wanna make sure that's out there.
Twenty-four calendar days.
Yes, calendar days, and there's some pretty healthy...
Which is about half the time that they anticipated.
Right, and it's gonna be, I think, the route they're coming up, they're coming up on the west side of one eighty-five, and then, then, um, they don't have the territory on the front to go through, and also they, they'll have to bore under, uh, under one eighty-five, but I think they've already taken all those permits as well.
Did you, you said there's one, one easement, I was under the impression that they had already reached the agreement on that.
They have, it's just a matter of, I think this entity is tired and in some sort of, uh, you know, releasing bankruptcy or something like that, and it, they expect you to get, who I was on a conference call yesterday, uh, morning, and they're expecting that to come either Thursday or Friday, so.
All right.
And you're ready, they're broke, so you need to approve this, uh, and then after that, we'll look at the, uh, the bond, uh, bond...
Right, so, under your tab thirteen therefore, that's what we're talking about solely at this point.
Yes, with, uh, with adding, but did you, the, uh, Harris County?
John, you want to pay the motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, and second, any other discussion? All pay the motions, if you can raise a hand. Motion carries. Okay, John, uh, the other one is the, uh, resolution for authorizing issuance of bonds.
Yes, sir, there is, uh, the, the bonds will not be issued by, by, uh, Harris County, there will not be the obligation of Harris County, uh, and create no, no debt on, on, uh, against you or the, or the general, uh, funds of the, of the county. Uh, the bonds will be issued by the Public Improvements Authority, which is a, a public authority that, uh, that you, uh, have, uh, that has been created by the legislature. This Public Improvements Authority is, is a little bit like the Development Authority, but, uh, but it, it's not necessarily for industrial use. What happens is that the state law restricts, uh, by constitution, by general statute, a lot of powers that you, that you would, uh, you'd need to do, uh, to create a project like this, develop a project like this, or develop an industrial park and do some of the things you've done for some of the industry and that has come into, uh, in, in the Harris County. But what you've done is the legislature creates these authorities, which give you some extra powers that you would not have under general law, and that's what this Public Improvements Authority, uh, has done. You have issued bonds, uh, for refinancing your war, you've issued bonds also for the, uh, financing of the, uh, community center, uh, and that's what, and then the Public Improvements Authority will issue these bonds in their name, uh, and this resolution authorizes the, uh, and affirms the, the agreement previously, uh, the previous agreement that you've had with, with, uh, the, uh, Mulberry Grove development, as well as the intergovernmental agreement that you've got with the, uh, Public Improvements Authority. Once you, you, uh, if you choose to adopt this resolution, then the Public Improvements Authority's already adopted this resolution, we've been working with, uh, Jim Montesal, the Bond Council, and we'll have these, uh, the documents pretty much ready to, ready to go, and we will probably file the bond, uh, validation proceeding, probably on the first, advertising this, uh, the fourth and the eleventh of, uh, this, uh, December, and look to validate the week of the fifteenth. Uh, and then after that, uh, the bond will be sold to the, uh, the two developers, uh, their entity, and, uh, and from there, they will, uh, they'll give a notice to proceed to, uh, Gordy, and they'll start building, building the sewer.
Give us a lot of interest rate on the bonds, would you?
I think it's four percent. That's what I, what I recall, let me look at the Public Improvements, uh, probably four percent and it's five point four million. So that's one of the things, and one of the reasons we had to do this, because when you, when you, uh, did the intergovernmental agreement and the other documents that, uh, back in, in May, and refreshed those from, uh, two thousand and six, the, uh, there was no, we didn't, they didn't know exactly the, the amount, but now the, the, uh, bonds are, uh, they've come up to five point four million, and I'm pretty sure, because I recall reading these slides, one, eyes crossed, I remember, uh, four percent, it's...
While you're looking at that, let me, uh...
Are they tax-free on them?
No.
One thing, point I wanna make sure the commission is aware of, that the construction fee does not include the materials we are, we are buying the ducted iron pipe, um, which will save the, um, sales tax on it, um, and then we're, we've got two sources, we either gonna get it through Columbus Water Works at their bid price, or we have a, a separate bid from another entity, so one of the two, and I'm thinking that's around eight hundred thousand dollars.
It was somewhere around a million.
So, that's, that's an additional cost in there, and you may have, so, you understand why they're going for the five point four.
That's included in the five point four.
Yeah, yeah, right, this is, so you get three and a half, uh, for the sewer, and then you gotta have, you know, the...
Three, three point, that, three point four, three and a half, basically the laborer put everything in, and some of the connections.
I believe that the rate was four, uh, four percent.
So, these are not considered municipal bonds, a lot of municipal bonds aren't, aren't actually...
No, no, everybody's just going to a private entity, you get them, and they're, you know, of course, like you said, they're, they're buying millions, you know, bonds, so.
All right, motion? I'm doing, I'll make the motion.
Do we actually have a resolution?
Yes, it was handed out, uh...
We have one coming out of the, uh, Public Improvements Authority.
It was handed out.
Yeah, it was a tax-free, uh, tax-free, uh... Oh, right, here, sorry.
Okay, all right.
Couple minutes.
Yeah, no, yeah, stand over.
All right, we have the motion, we have a second.
Second.
Discussion. All pay the motion, see if I raised it. Anything else, John?
Uh, no, sir.
All right, anyone else?
Executive session for personnel and U.S.A.
Personnel, most, he, so this... All right, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Okay?